All right, six oh three. This is a regular city council meeting reconvening from to closed session to open session. City attorney, there is any reportable action from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. Council considered two items in closed session. Received information, provided direction, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Meeting called the order. Tina, may I have a rule call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino, councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Silent prayer and flag slurred. Lord, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, may I have a replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, January 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, January 20th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next agenda item F, council, any agenda approval, addition and deletion. If it's none, then I need to move on to next agenda item G, any presentation?
None this evening.
Thank you. Next agenda item H, public comments.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. We have one comment on this, under this section. Recycle Recognition Award.
Good evening. My name is Emily Devera, and I'm the working coordinator for cow waste. Here to present the 2023 Recycle Recognition Award to two out of three recipients here tonight. These businesses have shown outstanding efforts in recycling and sustainability. They have done an exceptional job in ensuring that all their recyclables are clean and dry before being put into their container. And they also keep their recyclables loose, ensuring that there's no plastic bags that enter their recycling cart. That's especially important because recycling ba— or plastic bags are not allowed in their recycling carts, and it's actually one of the biggest contaminants that we see at our facilities, or facility. Their commitment to being environmentally responsible is truly admirable and sets a high standard to our community. So congratulations to Quick Stop and Horizon Community Church on receiving this award. Do we have any representatives here from Horizon Community Church or Quick Stop? All right, well, we'll make sure to get those awards to them. Thank you. Oh, now I'd like to invite my coworker Lisa Klotz to present the last reward.
So I'm Lisa Klotz. I am the education coordinator at Cow Waste Recovery Systems, and I'm here to present the award to some very special, a very special group, very large group of people. In a time when caring for the environment is more crucial than ever, Galt Joint Union Elementary School District's dedication to handling waste responsibly sets a great example. And I'm here as the education coordinator to guarantee that each and every one of these schools, their staff and their students, make a great effort to recycle properly. They have classes for their students, individually classes. We have assemblies, and we also, they're doing a marvelous job in separating their food waste from their trash, and we always, at all times, encourage them to take that message home. So congratulations to Galt Joint Union Elementary School District for your tireless efforts in recycling and sustainability. And I would like to invite Superintendent Lois Yant and the Director of Food Services, Nix Paboda.
You get the one that breaks.
Okay.
So thank you so much for all that you do and your commitment that you have, and you're always open to having us come help grow your students as better environmental citizens, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And really, Lisa, you've been the reason why we've been able to do this. You've been so great about training staff with videos and coming out and doing the assemblies, and it's really, I want to recognize the staff that work in the kitchen, Nix Paboda, our food and service nutrition experts, and really, it's the yard supervisors. It's the— It's everyone that works in the multipurpose room in the cafeteria, because they're the ones that help the students and train them to do this food recycling, so it's them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, next agenda item is report by city council members on regional board, commission, and committee. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes, I have a couple. First of all, I wanted to mention our CalCities meeting that we had related to the revenue and taxation orientation on January 4th. We made introductions, discussed the issues facing the community this year. Some of the topics of conversation were tax funding for transportation, state budget deficit, obviously, it's been on the front of everyone's mind lately, e-commerce tax challenges, and the city manager's working group and the work they've done to begin to address that, and also state-funded, unfunded mandate issues. The overreaching themes seem to be that CalCities' priority is preserving local control and flexibility in revenues. Next meeting will be this Thursday, and that's actually our first Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting, and I look forward to seeing the chief on the Zoom call. Secondly, I was appointed to the Sacramento Valley Division to serve as a Region Three Board Member for CalCities. That region encompasses El Dorado, Sacramento Placer, Amador Counties, and everything kind of in between. And so I attended my first board meeting for that. We talked about membership meetings coming up, and I would encourage my colleagues to attend if possible. The first one is March 15th in Loomis, California. Looks like there are the top, one of the topics of conversation there is going to be public safety recruitment and retention. May 17th is at Shasta Lake City, and they're going to talk about affordable housing. And then July 19th in Elk Grove, which is pretty close for us, so there, the top, one of the topics is going to be extreme climate weather and disaster resiliency, being here in the South County. Other items were just really introductions, and the next division board meeting is going to be on February 12th at noon. For Secog, our next board meeting will be this Thursday, the 18th, and then the city and CSD, two by two. The mayor and I met with the CSD on the 5th, out at Station 46, and more to come on that in the future. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I just have the, I met with the Galt Youth Commission for the, my first meeting back with them. Want to thank Councilman Vandenberg again for letting me join back with them again. And we talked about a few activities. They did a youth survey, I guess, where they went around to survey some of the youth at the schools and stuff about their community and get input from the kids, students on the city and their take on what the city could do better. And it was a many questions, it was very interesting. Talked about a partnership with the Methodist Church coming up for one of their projects for the food pantry. Also, a meal day with the special needs students at the high schools. Talked about that as a project coming up. Community Cleanup Day, which the Youth Commission participates in, the monthly community cleanup day, which I think is coming up very soon, next Saturday. And then a new idea for a game night with seniors. So there was an idea for the youth to get together and have a game night and invite seniors, so that we can have senior and youth interaction with board games and things on an evening, something we're hoping to get started in the springtime. And that was pretty much the gist of the meeting, so it was good. And the kids are doing well with fundraising. Budget's very hefty, and so are able to have a lot of capability to do things they want to do. So I think, other than that, Mr. Mayor, I think that is—I also wanted to just apologize to the chief, I wasn't able to make the Kevin Tom royal. I was actually out of town down south yesterday, last minute trip, so I appreciate any of the council members that did go. But I was the first one I had missed, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. I also have nothing to report tonight. Next agenda item is J, Consent Calendar. It is recommended that item 1 through 10 to be acted simultaneously unless a separate discussion and action is requested by a council member. Councilmember, anything you want to pull, pull out from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I have a statement. I'm looking for it right now. Hang on a sec. My computer jumped out at me. I need to recuse myself from item five, Mr. Mayor, and give me a sec here. Let's see if I can pull up my phone. All right, here we go. Thank you. Yeah, I need to recuse myself for anticipating item five as my residential property is adjacent, directly adjacent to the proposed annexation area that is regarding this tax exchange agreement. Based on this, I have possibly a conflict of interest, so I recuse myself for that reason. And I will not need to leave the room, but will excuse myself from the vote on that particular item. Will participate in the other items, five through seven.
So, Madam Clerk, just for the record, Councilmember Farmer's vote, he'll still vote on the consent calendar, but he'll abstain as to item J5.
Counsel, there is something, we have a question to the attorney. I would like to give a three-minute recess. All right, we can do, we back from the break, open session. Attorney, do you want to make any comment on—
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think out of a balance of caution, let's table item J5 from consent and bring it back at a future, at the next council meeting. That way, we will have a quorum with assuming we have a full council.
So item number J5—
Will be pulled from this agenda and continue to the next meeting.
Thank you. I also would like to make a statement myself. I need to recuse myself from participating in item number J6 as my residential property within the annexation area, and that is the subject of first amended tax exchange agreement. Based on this, I have a potential conflict of interest and will recuse myself from that consent item. Because the item is on consent, I'm not required to leave the room, but my vote will be as to balance of the consent agenda item 1 through 5 and not, no, it's going to be 1 through 4, not on 5, and 7 through 10 only. All right, I would like to ask Madam Clerk if you can read the item from 1 through 4, and then from 6 to 10.
Okay, J, receiving file warrants for the period ending January 3rd, 2024, except the minutes of the regular meeting of December 19th, 2023, and the special meeting of January 9th, 2024. Treasurers' report for period ending November 2023. Lippi Ranch Subdivision Project, second reading. East Galt Infill Annexation, Simmerhorn Ranch Project, first amended property tax exchange agreement with Sacramento County. Summerfield at Twin Cities Road, first amended property tax exchange agreement with Sacramento County. Lease amendment with California Department of General Services for warehouse space at 140 Enterprise Court in the city of Galt for a term through May 31st, 2026. Update city personnel manual leave sections pursuant to SB 616 and SB 848, effective January 1st, 2024. Ambalistic shield purchases and appropriation request.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move items 1 through 10, with the exception of 5 and 6.
All right, and I would like to ask—
Six is still getting moved, just 5 and 1. Right, but I'm moving those items. Can I include 6? Correct. We have to vote on that separately, since this is a recursive. Okay, so 1 through 10, with the exception of 5.
And before, I would like to ask any public comment on this consent calendar?
No public comment.
I second that.
All right, this consent calendar moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Madam Clerk, may I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Item moved to 4 to 0. Thank you. Next agenda item K, Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hear.
None this evening.
Thank you. Then next agenda item L, Regular Calendar of Finance Department, subject, city of Galt Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. Memorandum on Internal Control Required Communication for year ended June 30, 2023. Independent Accountant Report on Compliance with the Position 111, 2022 to 2023. Appropriation, our limit increment, and independent auditor report on compliance regarding AB 3773. Mr. Boring.
Good evening, Mayor and, or Mayor and council members. The item presented tonight is the audited annual comprehensive financial report and associated documents commonly referred to as the ACFR for fiscal year 2022, 23. I'll provide a brief overview, but I'm available for questions if you have them tonight or in the future. It's a lengthy document, and it's hard to digest in a couple days. The short story is the auditors issued an unmodified opinion of the financial statements and did not report any findings. That's the gold standard we aim for every year. And I also want to note, the fiscal year 22, 23 ACFR was also completed all ti— on time. We're supposed to get it done within six months of the end of the fiscal year, so that's the first time in the past several years that we've been able to meet that deadline. And I also want to note, the fiscal year 23 ACFR includes the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate for Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting that was awarded for fiscal year 21, 22. When the ACFR is completed, we submit that, and it takes ideally six months, usually a little longer, for the GFOA to review that. So we're excited that we received that prestigious award for 21, 22, and we anticipate receiving that for the fiscal year 23 ACFR presented tonight also. So that award would be included in next year's presentation. I also want to provide just some general comments. Although we only present the ACFR once a year, this is a year-long process for staff. We're currently working on completing the single audit for federal awards for fiscal year 23, and as soon as that's done, we'll start working on the fiscal year 24 interim audit and planning our year-end process. So there's always someone in finance plugging away at audit somewhere. And it's also a project that we wouldn't be able to complete without support and coordination from all the city departments. You know, at the end of the day, you get a packet with a bunch of numbers, but there's a lot of back and forth between all the departments to, you know, provide support and meaning to the numbers. Or some of it goes into the report, and some of it's just for the auditors to meet their requirements, so it's a citywide project. And then just a brief overview of the numbers for citywide info. The city's net position overall increased $15.3 million over the prior year, which is, now it's $245.5 million, and that's a 6.6% increase, so that was an exciting statistic. Our revenues increased $8.5 million. Some of that was one time, we recognized the remainder of the ARPA funds that hadn't been previously recognized as revenue. So we likely won't have that same increase next year, but it was a healthy increase, and we also had increases in other areas, too. Our expenditures increased $7.7 million, and that's primarily work done on capital projects. Some of those were carried over from the prior year, so items that council approved at the end of fiscal year 22 that weren't completed, or, you know, majority of the work was done in '23, that's when the expenditures recorded. Our assets increased $11.7 million. It's related to the increase in revenue, completion of projects, so those are now assets once they're complete, and some year-end accounting entries. And our liabilities increased $7.7 million, and that's mostly related to year-end entries related to pensions. Depending on the performance at CalPERS experiences, which usually lags a year, will then be reflected in our financial statements. And so fiscal year, I believe it's 21, 22, CalPERS had a negative return, so that will drive our liabilities up in the years that that's reflected in our ACFR. And then there's a few adjustments for new GASB pronouncements. So last year, we implemented leases, and for fiscal year 22, 23, we implemented the subscription IT arrangements. So that will increase our liabilities, because instead of just showing the annual expenditures, it shows a liability for the future years that we are projected to continue using that subscription. And moving on to the general fund, one of the exciting numbers is our fiscal year 23 fund balance is $24.1 million. That consists of $154,000 non-spendable, and that's mostly inventories like office supplies, gas that we have at the courtyard, other items that, you know, don't, we couldn't exchange for cash value immediately. We have $6.1 million committed, and that includes the economic reserve policy and a few other smaller reserve policies that the city has. We have $2.8 million as assigned, and that's primarily items that were approved by council. You know, a lot of them are at the end of the year, and so we weren't able to complete those projects in fiscal year 23, so we carry those encumbrances, and we have contracts for over to '24, so that reflects those amounts. And we have $15.1 million in unassigned, and that's the remaining balance. It doesn't fall into the other categories. I just want to point out, some of that includes ARPA funds that didn't have expenditures or contracts awarded, so that's a portion of it that was counted towards that increase. And we also received $1 million in Measure Q in fiscal year 23, which is about a quarter of the sales tax collected. And so that rolls up into our undesignated, so we keep track of that separately, so we can report that to you, but that's where the Measure Q monies lie right now at the end of the year. And for general fund revenue, we received $24.5 million, which was an $8.9 million increase from the prior fiscal year. And again, that was the recognition of all of the ARPA funds, which was over $6 million. We also had increases in our sales and property taxes, and we collected deferred TOT tax in fiscal year 23. And then again, we had Measure Q, which is part of general fund. Our general fund expenditures were $19.3 million, which is a $4.9 million increase over fiscal year '22. And again, that's mostly related to projects that were completed. I also want to point out, we discovered a few minor typos in the report, so we'll work on getting those corrected. On page 14, in the discussion about Measure Q, and it discusses the items that council had approved for fiscal year '24, it inadvertently references Measure R in there, which is incorrect, so we'll work on getting that clarified. And on page 23, there's a reference. Somehow, the G in Galt Market got deleted, and it says Alt Market, but it should be Galt Market. But overall, the city improved its financial position over the prior fiscal year. We didn't have any issues noted by the auditors, and we remain in a good financial position. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Boring. Any council member?
Mr. Boring, thank you for this, and you're right. It's a lot to absorb, and I've only gotten through certain sections of it. But as far as those clerical errors, I just wanted to say that we, as long as the numbers are right, the letters, you know, I'm not counting on you, your spelling. Can you tell me more about, touch on the Measure R again? I measure, sorry, see, I just did it right there. Measure Q. I think we're so used to saying Measure R all those years. Measure Q, we collected like a million dollars, you said? I forget the exact amount, but what, how long, what, how much time was that over the year?
So the Measure Q was approved by voters in November of 2022, so it went into effect. Basically, retailers began collecting it in April of 2023. And then there's a delay between when the state collects it, so usually it's like a two-month lag, so with accruals. So the fiscal year 23 ACFR's reports amounts that the state collected for the periods of April, May, and June.
So about three months, then?
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to get a snapshot of. I know we had talked about 3.7, but more like four, but it looks like four. If you were to, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that should also increase going forward. There's still some lag, and some retailers not collecting that, so ideally, it's really easy to budget for that, because, you know, we already have good estimates for Measure R. And so Measure Q should be twice as much as Measure R. So our sales tax consultants are, that's one of the things they monitor, too, to ensure compliance. So if they get a vendor that's, you know, reporting Measure R but no Measure Q, then they'll follow up with the state to do an audit and make sure that those are reported correctly.
Okay. And my last question is just, just to clarify, the eight, 8.9 million or nine, oh, that's 8.9, I guess, the million increase, the Galt Fund. You were breaking down what some of that came from. I'm just doing this for the public again, just to reiterate what you said. It was $6 million of it that was actually ARPA money. We got federal government. And then there was some TOT money that we collected that was, had been deferred through COVID. And then what was the third piece?
There was, there were increases—
Measure Q.
Measure Q, and then increases in sales and property taxes.
Right.
Those were the primary drivers for that.
Okay. All right, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Boring. How are you today?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I'm doing pretty good, all things considered. Unfortunately, I left my notes at home, but I was curious, you know, today I spent a few minutes in a, in the PDF. I put Q in the search document, and I didn't see where Measure Q came up as independently tracked or line item. Did I miss that? Because I haven't gotten through the whole document? You know, I scanned through it all, but I haven't, like, really covered it all yet. So is it not done? Did we, did I forget that we didn't choose to do it, or what's the status of that?
There wasn't much to report for Measure Q for fiscal year 23. I believe in the, in the MDNA section, the Management Discussion and Analysis, under General Fund Revenue, it should mention that Measure Q, and it was, I think it was like $1,038,000 that was collected in fiscal year 23. But we didn't have any expenditures that were approved for Measure Q in '23, so we didn't do, like, a breakout schedule. So in fiscal year '24, we have approved expenditures. When we do that financial report, that'll go more into, you know, the previous amount of Measure Q that we've received, and then the additional revenue and expenditures for fiscal year '24.
A more stereotypical breakout?
Yeah.
Okay, fabulous. And then, you know, with COVID and ARPA funds, carryovers, do you feel that this act for this document is stereotypical of what we'll see moving forward, or you still— Or you still think there'll be larger fluctuations? Because as I look at some of the bottom numbers, you know, I see swings up and down in progressing years, so I find that a little concerning. And I understand why for some of it, you know, but I'm just curious of your opinion.
Yeah, the, overall, the revenue, we had, you know, the 6 million of one-time revenue that we recorded in fiscal year 23. So fiscal year 24, I would anticipate a decrease in revenue. And that's not from our ongoing streams. That's just, we had a large one-time item in 23. Our ongoing revenue streams, like our property tax, sales tax, those are projected to increase slightly, I believe. And then we'll probably have a spike in expenditures, probably in 24, because we have some of the ARPA monies that we've carried forward. And we've started some of the projects, but the majority of the project hasn't been completed yet. And then as far as liabilities go, those are going to spike. The primary driver is just the investment returns and actual expenditures for CalPERS. And then, you know, there's the delay until they hit our financial statements. So that's one that we don't really have control over. And then implementation of new GASB pronouncements.
Well, I'm glad the government hits the government just as hard as they hit us. That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boring. Good report, very clean report, is self-explanatory. And especially the financial, it looks very good. And as you mentioned, maybe next year, there is certain thing maybe cannot count, like one is ARPA money, right? And the other thing is deferment from the TOT, right? That's why. It is, it is a good report. Thank you very much. I have, just for the clarification, you know, on the general fund, is it committed 6.6 million, right?
Yeah, it's 6.1 million. That's-
Yeah, 6.1 million. It is a fund balance and reserve policy. So this is the both combined, reserve and the fund balance. Can you separate this one? How much is the reserve policy on that?
I don't have it broken down in the Act for. I believe the economic reserve policy is roughly 5.9 million, and that's based on the budgeted general fund and Parks and Recreation expenditures. And then there are like two minor fund or committed fund balances that we have that are less than 200,000.
All right, thank you. Then the last, just a clarification, unassigned, available around 15 million. That's, that fund is just in rainy day fund or that's kind of thing? What kind of fund that is?
So those are, when we go through the general fund balance, we have some sort of, you know, restrictions on their use. Like we have the non-spendable, we have the committed for approved policies that we have, and we have the assigned for items that we say have the money or we collected. The revenue and the offsetting expenditure didn't occur in this year, so we're carrying that forward. And that just kind of earmarks that those are, we have the revenue, and it basically makes it so we don't overstate the available amount. And the unassigned is just the remaining balance in the general fund that doesn't have restrictions. So anything that you could use general fund on, you could appropriate those dollars for those same uses.
Thank you. Any council member, any other comment?
I just have one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd certainly like to hear from any public comment on this, but a couple of things jumped out at me. I remember, I think, a time a few years back where our total general fund balance was less than the unassigned balance that we have now. I think it was like 10 million, and now we're at 24. And I know that, you know, there's things that, that play into that with COVID money and things like that. But, but even taking that out, we're still in really good shape. And I just want to thank the staff for, and certainly my colleagues, for the decisions we're making in terms of our budget and our financial situation. And, you know, getting another award for excellence in financial reporting is tremendous. And so when I first got on the council, I don't think that was even possible. And so you've done a great job, Matt, and certainly City Manager Hines on kind of bringing this together so that we're in stable footing moving forward. So, but I'd like to hear from, I have a couple of other just things I want to point out, but I'd like to hear from the public first.
All right, thank you. Do you have any public comment?
Harry Wenzel.
Good evening, Council. Harry Wenzel. You all know me. Anyway, I just want to touch on one item here, and it's Sean Farmer's favorite item, I know, solid waste. And when I was doing a deeper dive, when the negotiations were going on, I was trying to provide some information from Sean, it became evident to me that we've got about a 12-year running problem of not reporting fully the Cal Waste commercial revenue. I don't believe it's there, but Mr. Boring and Mr. Hines can let us know if it is, where it is. But I think that it's somewhere, it's somewhere north. I think that the number is about 3.6 that we report. I think it's on page nine, and I think that number should be around 7 million. That correspondingly is going to go with the expenses. And the thing that we do have is it's, it's in the franchise fees, but it's buried in the franchise fees. You know, the franchise fee that they pay. So I think that's something that, you know, our staff inherited. I think it should be fixed. I think it's important. And if it's different, you know, just let me know. If you don't think it should go there, that's fine. But I do think that it, it needs to go somewhere. And then in the audit, I don't want to take a lot of time tonight, but I want to congratulate Matt, you're 30 days ahead of where you were last year, maybe 38 days. But you've got a ways to go. If you go back about seven years, it was like, it was like 176 days. I think you're 300 and, 300 or so days like that. It's a tough, I know, having worked in financial reporting long ago, it's tough to get a document that big out. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Farrell because he puts his report out every, every month, and it's very understandable, but it's, you know, and it's part of the Act for. So, and then I'm sure I'll have questions for staff, you know? It's an interest of mine. So I think everything's going pretty good. And unless somebody has a question for me, I'm good. Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple more questions for Matt. Just to refer to what Mr. Wenzel's comments, I'm looking at page nine. If you can look at that, Matt, so you got that? So the franchise, am I reading this correctly? Under the revenues, like the seventh item down, franchise taxes was 941,000 change? That's the franchise? Does that represent the franchise? Is that the franchise fee that we charge Cal Waste? Is that, is that part of it, or?
Yeah, that's part of the franchise fee. But there are other ones, too, so that it's rolled up with other-
It's in that number, though?
Yeah.
Okay. And then down further under expenditures, we have the solid waste operations, 3.6 million. Is that related to as well?
Those would be, should be the expenditures that we record in our solid waste fund.
Okay. Oh, okay. It's not related to the, okay. I'm just trying to touch on where those items would be that he's mentioning. He spoke of the franchise fees, but that, so those are in there. I'll talk to him later. Maybe he's implying maybe a better breakout line item, showing the Cal Waste separate from other, other franchise taxes. Maybe that's what he's asking, we don't know. But I know we can't really have dialogue with Mr. Wenzel up here. But anyways, I just wanted to ask if that's what, but I want to circle back a minute to two questions that I had. One was, was piggybacking on Councilman Vanderburg's question. I see where it was mentioned about Measure Q in, it was page 12, top of the page, where it says voters approved Measure Q, and it mentions the 1.1 million, $85,000. But the Measure Q money is, you said it's wrapped up, it's not broken out, but it's wrapped up in the larger revenue number?
Correct. It rolls up into the unassigned general fund balance. So once we have-
But not under a revenue bulk number? It's not, it's not under something like other taxes or something? Like I just saw a line item for-
I believe it rolls up into sales tax.
It's rolled, it's rolled into that, really? Okay. So is Measure R broken out separate, or it's also rolled up?
We usually don't break out Measure R. It's broken out in, it has its own category in our non-major funds.
Okay. Right. But not Measure Q yet, you said?
Correct. Measure Q is going to be part of the general fund. So like next fiscal year, once we have more revenue and also expenditures, we'll do a breakout to show those. But we didn't for fiscal year 23 because we just had the one-
Okay, so that, that's what I'm getting at, is just what Councilman Vanderburg is that we will in the future see a breakout for Measure Q.
Correct.
So we, so us, you know, again, we're not accountants. So like looking at it, I would like, when I see revenues, that there was a breakout for the Measure Q. It'd be nice to see that because obviously that's a thing for us, so.
Yeah, and in the Act for, for next year, in the MDNA section, we'll have a table that kind of breaks out. Here's historical Measure Q revenues that we received, or, you know, sort of the balance of Measure Q funds, and then additional revenues, expenditures, and remaining balance of Measure Q funds.
All right. And then my other question was, and thank you for the pie graphs. I always like the pie graphs. I mean, you know, because you can get, I mean, this document, it's how many pages? 200? Actually, it's 100. It, you know, it, so it does like nice to summarize. So he was asking, or I'm sorry, I forget who was asking, but it might have been Mr. Vanderburg about the, you know, that we saw this big increase in the, he was asking if future, if you thought it was stereotypical of what we're going to see. I know we saw like a huge bump in sales tax. It was something like 20% or 19%, right? Over, over whatever during COVID. I mean, we were all skeptical that that's going to be consistent. Do you know offhand like what our tax people are predicting that a reasonable expectation would be going forward? Like, we're not going to see another 19% over next year, over this year, for sure.
No, I, we got some preliminary information from them, and usually the next meeting we have in April, they'll give us more of a detailed outlook and budget figures. For fiscal year 24, it's relatively flat. And then I believe 25 and 26, it goes back to its normal, kind of roughly 2% to 3% increase, but we're not expecting another, you know, 19% jump. So it's more-
So they're expecting, whatever we, whatever we took in this year, in 23, they're expecting it to be consistent for next year?
Correct.
So now they're not, so they're not, based on that, I'm not getting in the weeds a little bit, but, so they're not, they're not projecting any sort of downturn in spending, I guess I would say?
Yeah, they're not projecting a one-time spike. If anything, it might be like negative 0.3%, but overall, it's flat. So that's kind of like our new floor. And just kind of relatively stable growth in the out years, which is what we've experienced before.
Okay.
Just real quick, Sean. Even, even with inflation, doesn't that generally drive tax revenue up some?
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just curious.
GALT's a little special because a large portion of our sales tax is based on fuel prices because we have several gas stations. So part of what goes into it is, you know, inflation in the various industries that we have, but it also fluctuates a lot with where gas prices are and where they've projected them to be. So it kind of helps GALT in a recession because people still typically have to go to work in other places, so they're still buying gas. So we don't feel the downfall as much as, you know, other larger cities that have large malls and other large retailers. But then when there's high inflation, it, we don't also get the same benefits. We're more steady.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Boring, and it just came, it occurred to me that, I know this is not really likely, but maybe for future, and I know people get bored with financial reports in the audience, maybe not Mr. Wenzel. He lives for these moments. He would not miss this meeting for anything. But for most people, but it would be kind of nice if like, like page 10, which is of real, you know, expenditures versus revenues, if that slide could just be thrown up as we're all having these discussions once a year, would be kind of nice. Because then people can look up there and go, oh, because, you know, not everybody's going to download this from the packet online, just, just an idea. But regarding that graph, so, and I know you haven't been here that long, like three years, Matt, maybe?
I've been back, it'll be two years next month.
Okay, two years. So I don't know if you recall like what the, I'm just trying to think back, and I didn't have a chance to pull up my ACFR from previous years to kind of glance. I will definitely do that. But property taxes basically was one of our main generators of revenue, right? 20% according to this graph. And then sales tax, 17, which is like second, actually, it's not second, but I remember property tax seemed like it was higher than, like it was a, not higher meaning number, we obviously collect more, but I felt like it was a bigger piece of the pie, say, three years ago, like a bigger percentage of our overall revenues were from property taxes. And I feel like, looking at this graph, it seems more diverse, like that's a smaller piece. Is that, am I just thinking that's not the case, or is that what you recall?
I'd have to look at the prior years. I know that property tax has always been one of our major revenue generators for the general fund especially, but we can, we can take a look at that.
Just curious how that fluctuates. You know, like, as sales tax become like, I'm curious with, you know, with Measure Q, and it generated money, and we have Measure R and Q, and then, you know, bringing on like new, you know, economic development, like restaurants or whatever that are in the queue to be built or whatever, you know, is that going to change the percentage? Is sales tax going to be a bigger piece of the pie of our revenue? Is property tax going to be, remain still the same? I'm just curious how those numbers fluctuate. I'll look myself on the past ones, but I, I don't know.
It will be skewed, especially going forward, because Measure Q is part of the general fund and rolls up into sales tax. So in the future, as, you know, especially in fiscal year 24, when we get a full year of the Measure Q revenue, then our sales tax would be a larger percent of overall revenue in the general fund.
Okay. I don't have anything else right now. If I have further questions, I will, I'll definitely, yeah, I see that. Thank you, Jay. I'll definitely reach out to you, Matt, but thank you for the report. It's interesting. It's not basically something I like get excited about reading, but it is interesting, and I would, thank you.
It's good for late nights when you can't fall asleep.
There you go. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any council member, any comment?
Yeah, I just, a couple of final points of things that jumped out at me as I was reading through this, and I certainly didn't read it word for words. I have, have all that time. But a couple of things that jumped out to me, on page 150, it shows our city's population over time for the last 10 years. And I found it interesting that in 2000, in 2021, between those years, we lost about 1,000 residents. And then in the following year, we gained about 200. The other piece was the amount of building permits that we have pulled over time. I think the last three years, it's, it's been pretty low. I think 150 was one of the largest years. And so I, you know, it's, the interesting part for me is, is that I wonder where people are going. And secondly, if what we can do to retain our residents here, and what we can do to bring, bring residents back. And I'm talking about the, the group that's in the, you know, twenties to young, you know, early thirties, where they may go away for a time for college, the military, a job offer somewhere else, but they want to come back. And at some point, we've got to see what we can do to recapture some of the old GALT folks that want to come back. And I just had a relative move from GALT and was unable to find a residence here to live in, based on their situation, and now live in Lodi. And so I just found that an interesting piece, that during that one year, we lost so many people, and then we're only gaining 200 back over time. And so, so that was one thing. And then the second thing that I want to bring to my colleagues' attention is, on page 12, we're talking about the Parks and Recreation Fund and significant events and things that have come from that. There's a, there's a statement in here that the GALT market revenues decreased by $38,000, and that seems to continue to trend. And what I'd like to see in the near future is what we can do to shore that up and/or actually bring in more money. And it's wonderful that we have Measure Q to help offset some of- Um, and it's wonderful that we have measure Q to help offset some of our, our priorities, which is Parks and Rec and landscape and lighting, but if we continue to have a cylinder, think of a water bottle with a hole at the bottom, and a spout at top with money coming in, and we still continue to lose that money, at one point, we, I think we need to make some decisions on what we can do to better stabilize that and/or, uh, increase the revenue, and so, uh, again, I know we're not talking about budget stuff tonight, other than the, the report, um, or the market, or anything like that, but those were a couple of things that jumped out at me, and so, um, I would just like to, uh, offer for, you know, contemplation, uh, what that looks like in the future, and, uh, and I don't think it would have jumped out at me if we hadn't been losing money over time, uh, from that same, same enterprise, and that may be the wrong word, uh, because I know there are enterprise funds, but, uh, from that, uh, revenue stream, so, um, that's all I had, and I, I just want to thank you all for, for the work, uh, and a couple of typos, not a big deal, obviously, when we have a hundred and, I don't know, a hundred-and-seventy-five, two-hundred pages, but, uh, appreciate all the work, and certainly, Matt, take it back to your staff, that, um, I, I appreciate what they do, and I know that sometimes during, certain times of the year, they're slammed, but it's really nice to see that we're continuing to keep up our checkbook every month as opposed to before. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have another comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just curious, those are, and thank you, Rich, for bringing that up, I did think that was fascinating, too, on the population number, that looks like we're kind of back where we were in twenty-sixteen, that we declined, and then, um, yeah, it, it just makes, it makes me think of, and I know Mr. Papadopoulos is not here tonight, he's on the cast with me, but this, this is a conversation that we've been having at the school district level with the cast, um, meaning with the, but Craig was part of those conversations where they've been talking about, how can we have more houses now in Galt and be pulling, be pulling more building permits now, but yet we have less people? And I just want to just point out, just the public are wondering the same question real quick, is there was a large conversation about, uh, people leaving and then backfilling those same houses, like, for example, we have a family that, say, moves out of California to make a better life for their family, and maybe they have like three kids, and then the person that's backfilling that is like a widower, or a couple with no children. We're seeing a major decrease in family size as far as how many children per family, and that's really affecting those numbers, so even though you might think we have more households, less people, those things, you know. What I also thought was interesting is the unemployment rate was eleven-point-eight percent in twenty-thirteen, and it's basically declined, and kind of went like this, but it's basically at five-point-two. I don't know what made it eleven percent in twenty-thirteen, but, um, maybe we're just coming off the heels of recession or something, I don't know, but anyways, it's half of that. Um, my last thing was, question to Armando, with, in regards to, um, Councilman Lozano's question, do, what, where do you think, do, what do you think, just quickly, if you can, the thirty-eight thousand dollar loss? Is it, is it a net loss due to rises in maybe cost of, uh, payroll, um, you know, that kind of stuff has, has decreased that profit, or is it an overall, like, is that a gross decrease? Can you comment on that real quick? What do you think?
I haven't looked at the numbers on which he's referring to in the timeline, so I'd have to look at that to see-
Okay.
Exactly what it is.
Well, when you find some time, if you could get back to me on that, I would be very, if you could maybe email the council?
I'm, I'm planning on-
No rush, but-
Tomorrow, because I'm a little surprised at that one.
I'll, I'll add the thirty-eight thousand was just a decrease in revenue, and I know in years past, some of that's just due to the weather, um, because if it rains, then, you know, the, the vendors don't come, so some of that variability is just based on the weather, I know we had a lot of stormy days in fiscal year twenty-three.
I was just curious if it was a, if it was a decrease, I don't have in front of me, if that was a decrease in gross revenue, or if that was the net revenue, because that would help me figure out if it was-
Uh, thirty-eight thousand was, uh, gross revenue.
Okay.
And then we did have, uh, increased expenditures, just, you know, with, you know, increased wages and, and other items and vendors on the pay.
That's why I asked, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure.
From the staff, any, uh, from the council member, any comment or from the public? If it's not, then I'm looking, uh, to approve this agenda item L one.
I, I, I approve that, I, uh-
All right, it's-
Motion to vote for that.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Yeah, thank you.
Seconded by Mayor. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. This agenda approved by four to zero. Thank you. Uh, next agenda item, L two, uh, Public Works Department, subject authorize assurance of request for proposal for the Walker Park two A improvement SEQA ER, E I R, previously completed NEPA pending, identify the sources for the grant funding, match in the amount of two-point-six million. Uh, Mr. Selling.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, in a moment, uh, Mr. John Griffin, our deputy director, will make a presentation. Uh, I'll just preface it by saying, we got some great news, uh, late last year, uh, staff, uh, his staff applied for a grant, uh, for Walker Park for the next phase, and, uh, we got word, uh, like I say, late last year, that, uh, we were going to receive two-point-six-five million dollars, basically fifty percent of, uh, the, this next phase project, uh, which is about five-point-three million dollars, so, uh, I don't want to steal any more of his thunder than I already have, so with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Griffin, and we'll be available afterwards for any questions, along with, uh, Parks and Rec Director Solis, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Good to meet you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Uh, tonight, since Mike said tonight's presentation is on, uh, moving, options moving forward on Walker Park, it's two A. Uh, tonight's, uh, presentation's going to cover four main subjects, again, just a quick review of the project description, uh, secondly, we'll, uh, review the, uh, the source of the grant award, discuss the required match and overall funding, not only for this project, but other park projects that are ongoing. Uh, thirdly, we'll talk, uh, very briefly about the environmental review process that goes along with this funding source, and then we will wrap up with staff's recommendations. Uh, again, just as a recap, um, initially, the project, uh, started, the work was started several years ago, and that consisted of grading for the three ball fields, it also included, uh, the access roads and grading and, uh, just rock for the, uh, for the future parking lot. And so with this grant, uh, what, what the project, project description consists of is expanding and paving the existing parking lot, it's also building three new baseball and softball fields, uh, constructing a new restroom, um, installing, uh, landscaping around the project area, and just, uh, as a recap to the, this is from the master plan, uh, from twenty-twenty, and the project area is shown bound and red here. Uh, as Mike mentioned, uh, you know, this funding source is grants, and so I kind of want to go back, take a little recap on, uh, how we look at grants here in Public Works. So Brandon Woods, who is one of our three engineers here in Public Works, he's not available tonight, uh, but one of his many responsibilities is to, uh, screen potential grant applications for the city, and this past year, Brandon submitted ten grant, uh, ten grant applications for parks projects, trails projects, uh, roadway projects, and as Mike mentioned, in December, uh, we received notification of award of a two-point-six-five million dollar grant for the Walker Park project. And this, uh, grant, the, the source of the grant is the State Land and Water Conservation Fund. This, this grant source requires an equal match, and that equal match is not currently identified in the city budget. Uh, and the way the, the grant works through the state, this grant is not formally awarded until the National Park Service approves a recommendation from the State Parks Office of Grants and Loans. So with this, uh, grant funding source, that does have some impacts to our overall schedule, uh, most importantly is that construction cannot commence until we finish with all of the National Environmental Policy Act documents. Uh, it's just, it's a, it's a hoop we have to jump through, but there is a timeline that's associated with that hoop, and, um, that hoop could take anywhere between six months and two years, and because, you know, we had not anticipated receiving any, any federal funds for this project, that NEPA process has not started, and we would start that process as part of concurrent with the design contract, should we get authorization tonight to issue the RFP. Kind of hard to read, but here is what we envision as the overall project schedule, I'll just highlight a couple of the major milestones. We anticipate coming back, assuming, again, we are authorized to issue an RFP, we anticipate coming back in June of this year to award a consultant contract for preparation of the construction documents and doing, and preparing all the associated environmental documents and studies. Uh, should we award in twenty, June of twenty, June of this year, we anticipate, um, completing NEPA and the construction documents sometime around May of next, of, May of next year, and then awarding a construction contract in September of twenty-five. Uh, based on those timelines, we are hopeful, we're very hopeful, and expect that we would complete construction, uh, October of twenty-six. So again, these dates assume, are, these, these dates are based on having NEPA approval prior to construction contract award, that's one of the conditions of the, of the grant funding source, so these date, these timelines would be impacted should, uh, that NEPA process take longer than anticipated. So this table here presents the overall project, uh, anticipated, or the project costs, and this, uh, table here is from, uh, SOMAS, as part of the master plan that was completed in twenty-twenty, and again, it shows an estimated project cost of five-point-three million dollars, with a little more than four million of construction, and then the remainder in engineering and in construction-related soft costs. As well, as we're all aware, there are several, several other city, uh, parks projects that are underway, and there's a number of projects that will impact, uh, both the City General Fund, park capital fees, and the citywide capital fees. So this table identifies these, the four projects that are underway, and again, we have the, 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 um, Gore-Aquatic Center pool slide, we anticipate returning to council, uh, February, the second meeting in February, with a recommendation from the Park and Rec Commission on what, uh, pool slide height we recommend and obtaining approval to move to, uh, because preparing construction documents. We also, at that meeting, anticipate bringing forward the, an updated rendering of the Shabola Skate Park, based on feedback that we received from the community, and then lastly, uh, with the Elliott Ranch subdivision project, there's a, a large park that will require some additional funds, so this table here identifies the, the four projects that are underway, um, the estimated additional funding need, and from those various funding sources, what the, uh, estimated fund balance is at the end of this fiscal year. And, and so the city fund subtotal for these four projects is approximately ten-point-seven million dollars, and then we also have roughly an additional, uh, six-point-four million dollars in grants and developer fees, that would contribute to the total project costs for these projects, have a roughly, uh, seventeen million dollars. In recognizing that these projects take several years, this table here just, uh, it highlights what fiscal year, or how much in each fiscal year from each of those three funds, we anticipate needing, again, recognizing that the large dollar costs, uh, happen during the construction phase, a majority of those funds are not needed until fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, the schedule here assumes that we start construction next fiscal year for the pool slide, and that skate park, and Elliott Ranch, uh, parks are both under construction and complete in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And then again, we start design next fiscal year, and we're under construction in twenty-five, twenty-six for Walker Park. And we've touched on this briefly, but I'll mention it one more time, uh, NEPA is a very important part of this grant, uh, this grant source, and although we have completed SEQA, we will piggyback on SEQA, but need to complete a number of studies, uh, to, to jump through the hoops that are required as part of this grant, uh, this, uh, grant source. So with that, uh, staff has two recommendations. First is to authorize us to issue the RFP, uh, for engineering services associated with the design of these improvements for the park, and to complete the NEPA studies, we would be written and returning probably in June to authorize a contract with a consultant. Uh, we're also recommending that council identify park capital fees as a matching fund source for this grant. And, uh, this is, the last bullet here is just a couple of the risks if we don't, uh, move forward in a timely manner on this grant. So with that, um, as Mike said, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Uh, so just a couple of quick questions, just to clarify, if I'm understanding this correctly for the public, um, your project, the, the, is it NEPA or NEPA? I guess it doesn't matter, it's, it's an acronym, so whatever, call it NEPA. So NEPA documents, um, could take up to two years, but the schedule that you've put forth here is assuming a one year?
Correct.
Okay. So, if it did take two-year, which, you know, knock on wood, it would push all this back by a whole year?
Correct.
All right, so, um, I know you went over it a little bit, but, I know it says construction activities cannot begin, but basically what you're asking us here is you're, you're, I'm assuming you're asking us for everything we could possibly do to get prepared that we are allowed to do in preparation for those documents to come back, so the minute those documents come back, we can then move forward. Is there anything outside of that you think we could do even before that, or is it every, is everything already included?
Right now, because this project wasn't included in the budget, we, our first step would be to issue a request for proposals.
Okay.
And, and yes, so-
Including construction?
No, that would just be preparing the bid documents to advertise for bid, so we would be preparing the engineering documents and doing the necessary, completing the necessary environmental studies.
So, and I, and I apologize, I can't see it, because even on our thing, I can barely see it with my eyeglasses, like, this is really small. Maybe for a future, uh, like, this slide would be helpful, we could manipulate it somehow the public can read it, too, on the, because if you're sitting in the public, and I've been there, and you're reading, you're like, well, that's helpless to even have a slide if you can't read it, right? So it says, um, RFP for the engineering and all that, uh, and then it says, um, the bid opening, so the bid opening looks like it takes place between August and October of twenty-five, so that is outside of the year, that we are hoping to get the, so, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, if, if it is a year before those documents come back, the bid, the, the opening for, for, for bids, for, for the construction company is going to come after this, after the documents, right? Outside of that year, we're, we're thinking there's a year window to get the NEPA documents back, right?
That will all be, what we're showing in our schedule here is roughly twelve to thirteen months for preparing the bid documents and can, and completing the necessary studies. What we're anticipating is, all within that thirteen months, we get those studies done, it's, that's a fairly quick process.
It is, okay.
That gets submitted then to the state and to the feds, and then they go through their, their checklist process, and just make sure we've done it all of our-
And that starts the year, so that's when the clock starts for the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what we're thinking, though, that should still fit within-
Okay.
Uh, this timeline here.
As I'm just trying to, I was just asking if like, is there anything else, like, for example, going out to RFP for the actual construction, where we have the contractor and all that, all that even lined up in advance of getting those approvals?
No, it'll take us about, it'll take us roughly, we're estimating a year to get to the point where we're ready to advertise for construction bids.
Okay, okay. So, so the, so your answer to my question is, there's probably nothing else we can do to, to, to get ready to go, like, to ready to jump?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, um, yeah, it's disappointing, we're not going to see it done till twenty-six, but, I don't know, I guess these things take time, um, which I think is actually all the talk about measure Q building up and all that stuff, and that we, you know, where we're going to get the money from, having a little bit of time to let money generate, I guess, is a good thing. Um, my other question was, and I apologize, I'm going back to you right now, let's see, um, I can't find what it was, I'll relinquish the floor to my colleagues, you know what, I don't remember what it was, let me look at my notes, someone wants, go ahead and speak, I'll pass.
I'm all for it, um, it's not often we get gifted a grant like this, um, sometimes we're asked to spend that much in interest on money that never does anything directly on the dirt, so this is, to me, I see it as the exact opposite, uh, I look forward, forward to voting yes.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Vandenberg said, you know, it's been kind of a long time coming, I remember when we looked at the, the Walker- I remember when we looked at the Walker Park master plan a second time after it sat on a shelf for a long time, and, and I think we have a good product out there that's going to be a useful amenity for our community. And unfortunately, when you get government money, you have to jump through their hoops, and I appreciate your, your putting the presentation together, it's very clear, and, and, you know, move forward. I, I look forward to supporting this as well.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Griffin gave us a good report, and especially this grant, and I believe we matched the money as a city, I believe we well matched the money, it's a, it's a good project. Same thing we'd like in for the clarification, John, as Councilmember Farmer asks, is six month minimum and two year maximum, why is too much gap? What's the big hurdle when national environment policy, and also could you might be explore, what's, what document include in national environment of policy?
The, the reason for that, that's the schedule they're informing us, how long it could take on the best case, and how long it can take on the worst case. And I'm guessing that part of it is if there's questions, or if they determine more studies are needed, and also too, because there are, I think in the state, there's 10 to 15 agencies that are receiving this grant funding, so we're all going to be submitting documents along a similar timeline, so they need to factor in staff time to process all that as
So that's me, these the document we going to apply to the national, to the state agency, right? That's why it's from six, it take from six month to two year, or this can be like an including a SEQA process is also including on that environment?
We've already completed SEQA, so we're just going to be piggybacking on what was prepared.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is six month to two year, this is the approximate, it could be done early if we are a little bit more proactive, or that's your opinion?
We, we will move as fast as we possibly can on this. With NEPA and as with SEQA, there's a number of steps, there's public notification process, there's public hearings that, those are mandated, and those timelines are required that we have to adhere to, with it being NEPA, that also has to be posted in the federal register, and that process also takes time for the state and national parks office to receive comments. So there's a, a lot of things that are really outside of our control, and we're hopeful we get through that process really quickly.
Thank you. And just for another clarification on the cost, the engineering and environment around $400,000, right? This approximate, what's included in that?
So-
Like, and if you can-
Yeah.
-little bit detail on that.
Correct, so I'll use C Street as an example with that. What we typically, like, with C Street, we had hired the engineer, and they put together, you know, the plans and the specifications, there's a couple of rounds of comments where, with this being a park project, Armando and his team will receive the plans to review, and so there is, there's a process where we, we vet through what they submit to us. We look at a lot of the equipment, materials that are proposed, and that's just, there's a, you know, multiple iterations of, of engineering documents that get reviewed before we're ready to advertise. There's also, again, with it being a federal project, there are some hoops and some additional conditions that have to be added to the, to the contract, and that also does sometimes require that the state or feds look at our bid documents, look at our bid documents before we advertise for bids. So it's items like that.
Thank you, thank you.
I have, I have another question for Mr. Griffin. I was just thinking, so this is a reimbursement thing, right? They're not, we're not going to them and saying, there's so much money we need, and then they come back and, so, at the end of it all, we spend, they're going to reimburse us half? That's how it works, right?
Right.
Okay. So that we're not really worried about, because obviously this thing not going, I mean, costs are going to go up, what it costs, what a construction company would bid us today to build this is going to be different than in a year and a half from now, right? Absolutely no question. So whatever we turn in, in advance, it really doesn't, it's not so much contingent on, because at the end of it all, whatever the bids come back, because we have to wait that much longer to get the construction bids, and the construction is that much longer, whatever it is we spend, it's going to, we're going to get reimbursed half. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. So with that being said, we probably don't have it, any of these numbers you gave us with the 5.3 million, that number probably is not a solid number, right, at this moment?
That's correct, that's based on the master plan-
Yeah.
-that was prepared a couple of years ago.
The 375,000 in construction contingency, that's just your normal contingency stuff for over, for change orders and things like that, that's, that's not, that's not any kind of contingency number you guys have put in there because of the timeframe, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment?
I'm representing West Coast Arborists out of Stockton, California, and here I got Patrick Greathouse, he's one of my foremen, great foreman, phenomenal guy, does great work for us. And I noticed that you guys had, you know, talks about, you know, Walker Park expansion and developing, kind of doing more for the park and stuff, and, you know, Patrick and I are both Galt natives, raised here at elementary school, middle school, high school, played ball here. My mom was a yard dutyer, a greer in Valley Oaks. And we're kind of interested in contributing to Walker Park and, and helping you guys expand with tree planting. We're a municipal tree service, so we do all sorts of different tasks, tree planting, pruning, emergency response, stuff like that, a bunch of equipment to, to contribute to that as well. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with West Coast Arborists, or if you've heard of us or anything like that, but I just want to come here tonight and put our name out there and see if maybe there's some services that we can offer, if, you know, we aren't considered for, for this project here. And I'm not sure what the scope of work is, I don't know if you're planning on having one solid company or a few companies out there to do the construction, the, the landscape work and all that stuff, but, you know, we also plant trees, and that's one of our specialties and what we, you know, like I said, what we specialize, plant a variety of trees, we have multiple species at a, we have a nursery out in French Camp. We also do recycling, so all the wood that we remove from the city, all the brush and all that stuff, it all goes to our recycling center in French Camp, it gets turned into mulch. We send it up to Grow Well, which is a company that sells their chips to Home Depot. So all the chips that you see at Home Depot, you look at the bag, it says Grow Well, that's, those are our chips. So we, you know, provide chips and all that stuff, and we have a bunch of trees to choose from, and if we don't have the trees, we can acquire them from other sources. And I got a couple pamphlets here to pass out to you. He does some work for you guys. I'm not sure what his, how far he expands his work, as far as like emergency tree service, you know, middle of the night calls, tree falls in the middle of the road, but I would like to, you know, also, advert, I'll not advertise that, but, you know, let you guys know that we do provide those types of services too. And, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm from here, Pat's from here, and we would love to come back and, you know, contribute to the city and help out and stuff. I still remember when Walker Park was a, was a field with cows and it eating the grass, and my grandpa actually lives on Sargent, I grew up on Sargent between Orr and Pringle, be able to throw a football into Walker Park, you know, from where my grandpa lives, so, you know, just over the years, seeing Walker Park get developed and stuff, and, you know, I love Galt, you know, we both love Galt. Pat owns a house here, my grandpa's, you know, lives here still, and, you know, we just love to give back and stuff. And we're not looking for anything crazy, or looking to come in and smash out competition or anything like that, you know, we're not looking to poach work, we're just looking to, you know, maybe give back and, you know, give those services as needed, and, you know, we do provide services for school districts in other cities as well, and they kind of just call us as needed. And, you know, like I said, Valley Oaks, Greer Middle School, McCaffrey, all those places, you know, that I'm real familiar with, we'd like to come back and, you know, help out and stuff like that, make the tree safe for all the kids, and it'd be nice just to be able to tell my family, you know, we have guys working in town, you know, working on the schools and stuff like that, so. Yeah, that's pretty much it. You have any questions, comments, or anything like that?
All right, thanks for the information, and we certainly have your pamphlet.
Okay, thank you. I've also left business cards in there for myself and Patrick Greathouse, so, you know, feel free to call us anytime if you have any, you know, any work that needs to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, sure.
I would suggest you leave some information with Mike Selling, who's the gentleman sitting right in front of you here, Public Works. He could brief you on the process when it comes to it, you know, most likely there'll probably be a general contractor, I don't know how subcontractors, so he can maybe put you in touch with whoever that is, and see if he can get you in the mix for whatever you're talking about doing, or if you want to be maybe a potential bidder, you know, whatever. Just get with Mike, and he can clue it. As far as other work for the city, I think he has one, our city managers give, but Armando Salis at the end, you know, they handle all the tree work, I think, with Jesse's and all, so if you wanted to drop them information, you could give it to him, I think he has one though, but follow up with him on that, Mr. Salis. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, Councilmember, any other comment or ask the question to staff? So if there's nobody, no public comment, I would like looking to approve the item L2.
So moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Taken by Councilmember Farmer.
I have a comment real quick before we vote. I think there's a request in here to identify the source for the match funding from us, so whether it be-
Correct.
-general fund reserves or whatever, I think that's part of what we need to do.
Correct, yeah, our recommendation is, because this is an expansion of existing park, we can use park capital fees as our match.
Move as requested, is that better?
Yep.
Is there a second? I just want to clarify, we, we talked about this before though, didn't we? Like, back when we were talking about funding for-
All they're saying, all they're saying is we have to state that as part of the-
Right.
-authorization, as part of this vote, it must be stated in public. Oh, just-
Yeah, correct, we just need to note it on the resolution, so when we, you know, process the paperwork with the state, that they can see that the council has taken action and dedicated funding for this, and so that way we can move forward with the grant process.
All right, so this is a two item we're going to approve, right?
Essentially, yeah, there's two actions being requested for us to be able to issue the RFP. We do have funding in the budget, we just didn't have this work item, this project in the budget. So it's to authorize us to go ahead and issue a request for proposals, to get a consultant on board to start the construction document preparation and environmental work, and then the second piece is to identify the source or sources for the match of the grant.
All right, so it's moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I roll, roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by four to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is communication.
Then this evening.
Next agenda item, and city clerk's report.
Nothing.
Comments by staff, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our police chief has some parting comments.
Evening, Mayor and council, and Councilmember Farmer mentioned it before, just want to highlight yesterday's 11th Annual Reef Placement in tribute to Officer Kevin Ton. I know some members of council were here, some could not be traveling in other places. Rest assured, though, that the members of the organization are very well aware that this council is supportive of, of current and past employees and recognizing the sacrifices that we've made, and we understand there are conflicts from time to time, but we do appreciate everybody's support. The second thing is, we had a swearing in ceremony, was that two weeks ago? If it wasn't two hours ago, it feels like two weeks ago, but nonetheless, we brought in three new officers and three other staff into the organization and did a swearing in at the police department. So that was a good recognition for our new staff. We're down to, with the position you added related to the SRO, we're bringing on another sworn officer at the end of the month, so we'll be down to two sworn positions and three dispatcher positions left in the organization. So we are pushing hard with the accelerator fully down to make sure that we get those last positions filled. There's always wiggle and things that happen, and so until we get to that point, we will continue to push hard in that regard, and I thank staff for all the hard work they've done to make that happen. That's all I have, thank you.
Next up is our Public Works Director, Mike Selling.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment, I know this is Lorenzo's last meeting, so I just wanted to express appreciation to him for his leadership, and, and appreciate working with you, and I know we got some good things done, and we had some, some tough ones too, and I'm thinking about the, the solid waste rates. That was a heavy lift, along with obviously a couple of council members and the full council, obviously ultimately, but appreciated working with you, and I just wish you the best in whatever's next, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Let's see, who's, Armando?
I'd just like to remind city council that our Winterbird Festival will be held on February 3rd is our main event. We're doing something a little different this year, we'll be having a week-long events for the Winterbird Festival that'll start on Monday. Each day we'll have a different event. You can find that pamphlet on our website, it's on our banner, just click on it, and it'll open up a pamphlet for you and tell you what we're doing, where we're doing it, and what time we're doing it. So hopefully we can see you guys out there at one of those events. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Salis. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Next agenda item, comments by city council member, future agenda item, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, just a couple of things, you know, the chief mentioned the swearing in ceremony and the reefing ceremony was very well done, both of them, and I think the police department and staff that put that together, and it was great to see the community support out there. One other thing I want to mention is the Holiday Open House, once again, very well done, and community coming out, and I want to thank Dawn and Stella Butler for bringing Santa and Mrs. Claus to the event for the kids, and so keep up the good work, chief and staff, and, and look forward to that again next year. That's it.
Councilmember-
One more thing, I'm sorry. I, I want to thank Mr. Heinz for his time here as well, it's been three and a half years, and, and I think when he came on, we, the ACFIR actually was kind of the, today, I think, for you and for the staff is, is a big milestone, and I appreciate all the work done in many areas, but certainly in the financial realm. And so just thank you for your time here in the city, and wish you the best of luck, and, and certainly, don't, you know, feel free to come back whenever you'd like.
Councilmember Farmer?
Thanks. Yeah, I did want to also mention the holiday event at the PD, that was, it was very well attended, I, just, it's hard to believe we haven't had a council meeting since then. Yeah, that was a good holiday event, as it always is, and, and I was there shortly, and, and say thank you for doing that every year for the community. So I want to remind everybody, there's Community Cleanup Day, I believe it's a Saturday, but I think it's posted on the, is it on the city's page, Tina? The Community Cleanup, is it on the calendar, I mean?
I will check it out.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know the weather, actually, the weather might be poor, and it might get postponed, so I don't know, but look for posts on social media by the, by the youth commission, so. Thank you, Matt, for the report, I know you guys worked really hard on it, I know I don't say that a lot, finance stuff, I tend to, you know, but I just want to say thank you, I know you guys are working hard on that. Thank you, Mike and John, for the presentation with the, the Walker Park. And I had a, I don't know if this is really a suggestion for a future agenda item, maybe I can just, just want to bring it up publicly so you can maybe, I know as we get ready to dive into the C Street project, I had somebody come in the other day, and this has been something I've been meaning to bring up to you, but I, you know, we've talked about it before, but when this person approached me, I was kind of caught off guard, but they were like, it's great, we're going to see this big improvement on C Street. But they're like, but have you been on B Street lately? And so I went down B Street the other day and the storm was not kind to B Street. There's literally potholes that are probably that big around and like, I mean, you could literally like wreck your car and some of those are so big now, really bad. So I don't know if there's something that we can do, throw some gravel in there. I know there was, I think there was, you guys did some stuff, but people hitting them with the water and the gravel's just been thrown out. It's just terrible, so. But as far as future, if maybe, not, you know, right away, but if we could maybe get an update on what the, what the plan is for B Street, like, I know we're waiting on doing some gravel, I just want like some kind of, I need to be able to tell somebody something like what, what the plan is for that street, because it's bad. So I would appreciate that, if that's okay with the council, if you can come back. Maybe give us an email or something. And then lastly, yeah, I know Mr. Heinz is leaving tonight's his last meeting. So Mr. Heinz came in, you know, we were in a tough financial spot. We hired him, you know, for his financial prowess, came in, we were able to do a lot of hard work. And, and I would, you know, finances look good according to night, you know? I don't think I can sit here and say that was all the council's decisions and it probably wasn't all, you know, the work that Lorenzo and the council did together. Some of it was probably just good luck with COVID and stuff. But, but he definitely helped in a time we needed the city to help. So I want to say thank you for that. And I want to say thank you for helping with Measure Q, it was a big one to get the ball over the goal line on that. And so we wish you luck in your career and, and thank you for your service to Galt. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Sean about B Street. I'm not surprised, honestly. And I think technically you need three supports, I don't, three people to support, so I'm definitely the second, if I didn't notice anybody else supporting it. But as I was listening to people speak, you know, I'd like to thank everybody in the room for their hard work. Every single person here, including the citizens that listen online and come and speak and keep the pressure on us, it's very helpful to keep your eye on the ball. Mr. Heinz, thank you for all your service. I really do appreciate it. I'm proud to have worked with you. I'm proud that, where the city is. And I look forward to the direction it's headed based on the foundation that was set. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vandenberg. Thank you for the staff. Thank you, Mr. Heinz, your hardworking and your staff. Thank you for the public comment and thank you for the citizen came to the chamber. Thank you for the media came every meeting in this chamber. I did attend a couple of events. I attended this Sweden ceremony implies for Galt Police Department. Congratulations to all and welcome to Galt. I also attend the Reed Ceremony for Officer Kevin Ton. It has been eleven year, we will never forget his sacrifice. I also attend the grand opening of Aspiration and Wellness Center over on G Street and best of luck with them. Everybody, thank you, everybody hard work and especially Mr. Heinz, your hard work and best, best of luck. Your service, the time you work here, you really work hard. Thank you.